Mr. Merchant, we have all of our members joined in.
Okay, and it looks like we are in the meeting, so I think we're ready to start. Okay, welcome everyone to the local special indoor meeting of the Board of Adjustment, and this meeting is for February 18th, 2021. Hopefully that you are all healthy and warm through these difficult times. If the meeting is disconnected at any time, the meeting will be stopped and reconvened once the connection is restored. If the connection cannot be restored after 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to the next regularly scheduled Board of Adjustment meeting. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. For anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item or to speak under Citizens to be Heard, hopefully you've already arranged that with city staff that you intend to speak by phone or email. Reach out to them by phone or email, and we'll call on you at the appropriate time. We will call the case, we will recognize the applicant or representative to speak, and then I will recognize any protests. We will then close with the applicant speaking, the board will deliberate, ask any questions, and then the board will vote. If you have not prearranged with city staff to speak on an item, I will regularly ask if anyone else would like to be heard on a matter. At that time, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom. You should also be able to lower your hand this way, the board and staff will be notified that you've raised your hand. Just note that if you've already prearranged with city staff to speak, you should not need to use the raise your hand function unless for some reason you are not on our speaking lists. These instructions are also located on the agenda if needed. For speakers other than the applicant, please limit your comments to three minutes. If you call in after your item has been heard, or if you have a different matter to raise, you will be allowed to speak under Citizens to be Heard. When you call in, staff will mute your device, I ask that all participants keep their sound on mute until you are recognized to speak. Board members will be allowed to raise questions and make comments at any time during the meeting. Please do not interrupt board members while they are speaking because we need a clear record, and it makes the meetings go by much faster. Before you begin with your comments, please identify yourself by sending your name and your address. I'll finish my opening comments by noting for the record that I am not a cat. And I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Lincoln, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Merchant.
Present.
Ms. Asbury. I didn't hear her. Ms. Asbury?
You're on mute.
Present. Sorry about that.
Present. Voorhees.
Present.
Nabara.
Present.
Chair, we have our form.
Okay, great. First item on the agenda is to receive the minutes from the February 4th, 2021 meeting. Do we have any changes to the minutes, or do we have a motion to receive the minutes?
I'll move that we accept the minutes as presented from the February 4th, 2021 meeting.
Okay, that was a brief meeting, I don't think there's any changes. Once you're able to, cast your votes, please. Couple minutes on our end.
Waiting for Mr. Voorhees.
I've got his name crossed out on my screen to show him as not voting. Okay, well, you work on the PrimeGov, can we mark, Mr. Voorhees, I think he said you're abstaining.
Yeah.
Okay, can we mark him as abstained?
Yes.
Okay. And the minutes are approved, okay. Next item on the agenda, continuance requests and withdrawals, I think we have a couple of continuance requests.
I have three requests for continuance today, first is item 7, 14-782, defer to March 18th. Item 8, 14-815, defer to March 4th. And item 9, 14-780, defer to September 16th.
AJ, I'm just now, it's just now kind of standing out to me that the last request, September, do you have any context for that? And if not, it's fine, but September 2021.
Um, we spoke with the applicant, and he was unaware that the meeting was coming up. I asked him to do it till the next meeting, and he wanted to at least do six months. I wasn't sure how we were going to approach that, but I wanted him to continue it until March, but he sent a letter in for September.
Hmm, okay.
Nothing new, he just hasn't been able to proceed getting new site plans or have anyone come out to his home. So he hasn't gotten any new information.
I'm okay with March 18th, and then we can revisit a longer continuance, but if it's something that doesn't need to be on the docket, then maybe they could just refile or something. But this seemed like a huge continuance request for me. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd feel more comfortable granting a continuance till March 18th and then going from there, once we get some more information, including maybe reading that letter that he sent in.
Yes, I will send it to you and the members.
Okay. Board members, any comments on that?
This is, I would be inclined to agree with our chairman, I think it's six months from now.
I didn't get all of that, I just got feedback. If you could repeat that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said I would agree with our chairman that we make that date the March 18th date, because that is six months from now, that September date, that's a little bit too long.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you, we find out a little bit of context of what's going on.
Okay, if there's no other comment, I think we can receive a motion to continue. The first two items is requested, and the third item to March 18th.
I'll move.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second to continue the first two items as requested, and the third item to March 18th, once we're able to cast your votes, please. And the motion's approved, and Cindy, you will let the applicant know?
Yes, I will.
Okay, perfect. Next item on the agenda, request by public, which I see none, next item consent docket, seeing none. Next item is items requiring a separate vote.
Right, first item for public hearing is 14-818, it's a request of the City of Oklahoma City for a variance to the sign regulations in the double A district located at 14-501 Southwest 59th Street.
Is the applicant on the line? It's the city.
I don't see anyone from our Public Works Department on the line.
Okay, we'll move that item to the end of the meeting for now and move on to the next item.
All right, item number two, case 14-819, is a request of TMAG Real Estate for a variance to the paving regulations in the I-3 district located at 14-113 North Kelly Avenue.
Yeah, good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This variance application is to allow a temporary use of a gravel parking lot while the Hyundai store is rebuilt. The plan is to move the cars that are currently at the Hyundai store over to this lot onto gravel until the Hyundai store is rebuilt, those cars will then be moved back over to the Hyundai store, and then this site will actually then be converted into a new construction project and will be the site of the new Genesis store. There's a bit of irony in that, once the permit for the Genesis store is issued, we will actually be required to have gravel pursuant to DEQ and Oklahoma City, so that mud and debris and things like that aren't taken out onto the city streets. Obviously, putting hard surface paving would be really a waste of resources, because of course it will all be ripped up as they build the new Genesis store, so it's really a temporary fix to allow us to park on gravel, move the cars back, and then we will begin construction of the new Genesis store on the subject site. On behalf of answering any questions you might have.
Did you see the condition that staff placed in the staff report, and would you have any objection to that condition?
Well, I don't think so, except that so when it says that it should include a condition that cars be removed or the parking service paved upon the issuance of a CO for the new building, that doesn't allow for the fact that this will actually be a construction site once we move those cars. Perhaps that wasn't as clear in the application as it should have been, because once we move the cars, we can't convert it to hard surface, we will of course be in the process of building the new Genesis store on the subject site. In the end, of course, there will be hard surface once the new, you know, sales building and parking area are constructed. Perhaps a time limit on the variance would ease some concerns, we're happy to to put an 18-month limit on the issuance of the variance. We actually think it may be shorter than that, but that gives us the time we need, because again, once we then file for a permit for the construction of the Genesis store on the site that we seek the variance on today, we will be required to have gravel to avoid mud and all the other things onto the arterial street network.
Okay, that makes sense to me. The only other question I had would be whether the temporal time limit would be favorable or conditioning it on the certificate of occupancy, it sounds like the temporal time limit. I mean, I agree with you that adding to the condition, you know, a condition that says it has to be paved in order to get the certificate of occupancy. Based on what you've said here today, I understand that that wouldn't work out, but maybe saying that the variance expires, you know, whenever you get that certificate, or just putting a temporal time limit on it.
I think the temporal better for us, just in case we run into some snags with permitting unforeseen weather or COVID part two, or you know, whatever it may be the case, I think the temporal is perhaps the best way to do it.
Okay, board members, any questions or comments?
Is the gravel going to stay, or are you going to remove the gravel, David, if you don't?
So the gravel will be removed ultimately once the new Genesis store is built there.
Okay, cool.
Because it'll be a new car dealership like any other, where there'll be a sales building, and then obviously hard surface paving where the, you know, the display of the automobiles will be.
Good.
Okay.
Did we get any protests?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Did we get any protests?
That's, I didn't see any, is there anyone on the line that wanted to speak on this application? Okay, hearing none, I think 18 months sounds reasonable to me.
I'll move approval, maximum time 18 months.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the variance request in case number 14-819, for the reason that it meets the statutory conditions for variance for a period of 18 months. Once you're able to, cast your votes, please. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three is case 14-820, request of homes by Tabor for a variance to the setback regulations in the R-1 district located at 3404 Northwest 159th Street.
Is the applicant on the line?
I am here, yes.
Okay, you just wanted to introduce yourself and present your application?
Sure, yeah, my name is Zach Holland, 3232 Hardwick Road with Tabor Built Homes, and we are requesting a variance of 2.35 feet to the side yard setback of 3404 Northwest 159th Street. So to briefly summarize what happened, the lots to the rear of the subject property are slightly offset from one another by a couple feet at this location, and when the footing contractor was laying out the foundation, they did not realize the property pin for the subject lot was missing, but the corner lot pin for the neighboring lot was in place just a couple feet away. And so they mistook that property pin as being for the subject property, and as a result, the home was built at a slight angle on the lot with the encroachment on the side yard setback of 2.35 feet at the southwest corner of the home. There's also a slight radius to the street along the lot frontage, and so the issue did not become visually apparent until very late in the construction process. The good news is the neighboring home on the side with the encroachment was built 7.78 feet from their shared property line. And so at the closest point, the total distance between the homes is 10.43 feet. So even with the encroachment, it exceeds that 10-foot minimum distance between structures the code is providing for. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I appreciate these extra pictures, I don't know if staff took those or those were submitted, but those give us some context. You know, we don't like granting these, this one seems pretty minor, but just in general, I wish there were a way that we could correct this on the front end, so folks wouldn't have to come in front of us, but it is what it is. Board members, any questions or comments so far?
It's real similar to the last one we had last meeting, but at least they corrected up on the second house.
Yeah, and this one seems a little bit smaller than the last one. And it does have a little bit of that curved street, which we had a cul-de-sac last week or last meeting as well, so I can get on board with it, this one doesn't seem particularly egregious. I don't think there's anyone else signed up to speak on this matter, but is there anyone else on the line that was hoping to speak on this application? Okay, board members, questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance in case number 14-820, for the reason it meets the statutory conditions for variance. Once you're able to cast your votes, please. And it's approved.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Items item four, case 14-822, is a request of David Kinzer for a variance to the planted rear yard setback in the R-1 district at 8213 Northwest 151st Street.
Is the applicant on the line?
Yeah, yes, I am on the line, this is David Kinzer, 2925 Willow Branch Road.
Okay, just wanted to present the, an overview of your application, please.
We are wanting to build a small, a spool, you know, a large spa but a small pool behind our house there, and there's where it's showing it. And the building line is like three feet behind that part of our house that sticks up to the north. If we were to build the pool inside the building line, we would lose our patio, we would have no place for chairs, tables, you know, lawn furniture, or you know, patio furniture, anything like that. The, if we move it out there where we'd like to have it, it's going to allow us to keep our patio. We're wanting this, this spool for, well, for our enjoyment, and my wife who has severe arthritis and has some mobility issues because of back surgery four years ago and all, she would not have to go to, well, the different places, one of them closed, the senior pool. Anyway, we'd like to be able to do that, this is an in-ground pool, it doesn't block anybody's view of the lake or hurt anything, you know, scenic-wise. I believe that you all have a letter from the manager of Brown Lake who happens to live right across the lake there from me, that it is not a violation of the spirit of the law or the letter of the law, because the building line was established solely so people didn't put up tool sheds or build over it and block other people's views of the lake.
Okay, we did receive that, that letter, and we always like hearing what the neighbors think. You know, I struggle with these because generally a pool is tough to be considered a hardship, not having a pool, but in this case, I think your property is kind of unique enough, and you know, the fact that you're on that lake and not kind of in the middle of the neighborhood, I think helps you, and also the fact that it's not a big offensive shed or other structure, I think also works in your favor. Board members, any questions or comments?
I mean, if it was me, I'd worry about the water table and erosion in that area being that close to the lake, but that's not our problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Hang on here.
Sir, you can speak if you had a response to that.
I didn't want to interrupt him before we got through. There had been other construction in that neighborhood, and I have, along that channel, that little channel that you're looking at is really not a part of the original lake there. You dig down about three feet and you hit rock. And we're anticipating that, the directly north crosser, that open piece of grass there, when those neighbors built a retaining wall there, the contractor hit rock about two feet below the top of the lake and had to he had to build a cofferdam, had to jackhammer out footing to get down in there. We have, we have great soil for building, we don't have good soil for lawns and growing corn and such, and there's not going to be an erosion. I have a retaining wall on the lake, as a matter of fact, it's a concrete multi-tiered retaining wall already there at the back of my property.
Okay, I, you know, it was just a thought that I had.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, was there anyone else, I don't have anyone else, anyone else signed up to speak on this, is there anyone else on the line that wanted to speak on this application? Hearing none, I think we can take a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Too late.
And we've got a motion and a second to approve the variance request in case number 14-822, for the reasons that it meets statutory conditions for variance. Once we're able to, cast your votes, please. And it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five, case 14-821, is a request for special exception of JJB or MB properties to allow lodging accommodations at 3412 North Virginia Avenue.
Okay, is the applicant on the line?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, if you'd like to present your application.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, thank you to members of the board for being here as well, my name is Jason Stelzer. My wife Jennifer and I are here today asking for this variance to operate home sharing on an investment property that we purchased at 3412 North Virginia. We intend to, to operate the home sharing at a very limited basis in terms of the number of occupants. We know more than eight people, we've automated the house, we have cameras front and back, so we can actually see who's coming in and coming out, and we'll be able to enforce the stipulations that way. We have talked to the, to some neighbors as well. We don't really want to turn this into a long-term rental, just because that tends to be a little harder to maintain the value of the home and the surrounding properties as well, and those are some of the, some of the concerns we've talked to with our neighbors. We intend to, to try to target either parents of OCU students because of how close it is to the school or potential students, those are some of our main folks, we want to try to try to get this, this piece of property out to because of how close it is to the school, but also because of how quiet the neighborhood is. So we're, we're asking to do this for a period of no more than three years, and then at some point we will move our daughter, who's an OCU student, into it when that time period is over. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, and I see that the application includes a lot of the information that we usually ask for.
Yeah, I can make a motion right now if you want.
We'll make sure there are no protests, it sounds like, I didn't hear many before, but one question we do ask is, let me confirm here. Do you intend to advertise this as off-street parking only? I see that big driveway.
Yes, sir, we have enough room in that driveway to park three cars, and that's, that's the maximum vehicle occupancy we're going to allow.
Okay.
The streets are very narrow, we don't want, we don't need anybody parking on the streets over there, there's enough of that going on right now, anyway.
Okay.
And we're there, we're there very frequently as well, I mean, it's, this is not an absentee thing, we're, we're there, I mean, fairly often, we were going to be there this whole weekend, obviously, things in our part of the world and in your part of the world, we live in Fort Worth, so it's a little crazy for us trying to get up and down 35 right now.
Sure, sure. So if there were a condition that it'll be advertised as off-street parking only, that wouldn't be a problem for you?
We have absolutely no problem with that.
Okay, and three years, I think was the request, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board members, any questions or comments? Okay, I'll pause for a little bit, is there anyone else on the line that was hoping to speak on this application? Okay, I can get on board with this for a period of three years, I think that makes sense, and the expectation that the daughter's going to move in. On, in addition to the other conditions that are listed in the application, we would just clarify that it would be advertised as off-street parking only, but given those conditions, I can support this.
I'll second.
Oh, I can't make the motion, but I'll make it. I move for approval of case number 14-821, with the conditions that off-street parking only for a term of three years.
Okay.
Of course, I'll second because it's a wonderful deal.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve the special exception for a period of three years in case number 14-821, for the reason that it meets the statutory conditions for special exception. The conditions, including the following conditions, off-street parking only, or the property will be advertised as having off-street parking only, and for a period of three years. Once we're able to, cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you very much for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, case 14-807, is a request of Johnson &amp; Associates on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City to allow for a variance that required parking, to allow parking and maneuvering in the right-of-way, and to allow signs in the right-of-way at various locations in the vicinity of Northwest 39th and Pennsylvania.
Okay, I see some of the folks from Johnson, if you wanted to introduce yourself and present the application?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members, thank you, I'm Tim Johnson with
I'm Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates, One East Sheridan Avenue, Oklahoma City. And on with me is Mark Zitzau, who will make a brief presentation. I just wanted to give a little bit of an introduction. Some of you may or may not be aware that the city of Oklahoma City had a Better Streets Safer City project of, on 39th Street from Penn to Young's, which is a streetscape-type project. So there's a lot of improvements being done along 39th Street, putting in the street itself on a diet, making it a two-lane instead of a four-lane, adding for sharrows for the bicycle route and putting reverse angle parking in, which was approved by the traffic commission recently. So what we're doing in here is making a much-needed improvement to what has become somewhat of an entertainment district. And on some of the images that Mark will show, you can see the parking lots during the day are virtually empty. And so this, a lot of these buildings have been converted to clubs and they anticipate more retail-type uses coming along with the improvements of the city's project, which has been awarded. And construction will begin as soon as this weather clears up. So with that, I'd ask Mark to walk through the process.
Yep, thanks, Tim. My name is Mark Zitzau. I'm also with Johnson &amp; Associates. Address is One East Sheridan. Cindy, I think we worked it out to where I can share my screen, is that correct?
Well, I have your presentation on.
Okay. And so before I jump in, I think we were going to have Mr. Butler, the planning director, say a few things about the process and kind of why we're here.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Again, Jeff Butler, planning director. Just a little bit of background and, and history. Well, we'll, we'll start when it started back in the 1940s, 50s, 60s. A lot of these structures were built and of course, back in those times, we didn't have the parking standards that we have right now. Things were different. So this, this area was built in a different era and it's, you know, it's continued, has a long history. And we, at this time, wanted to show some TLC, I guess, to this area. It's one of many street enhancement projects that were funded as part of Better Streets Safer City. And so when we do one of these, you know, we, we come in, we want to, we want to maintain and improve the area, the, the local economy, the, the physical. We want to physically improve it so that it's better for all users. And in this case, given the kind of district that it is, as is the case with many districts that we go and do street enhancement projects, they're typically popular with pedestrians and cyclists and of course automobile traffic. And we want to, we want to try and enhance those experiences. So one of the main things that we've looked at in this project that JNA has worked on the design for is to make sure that we're accommodating pedestrians and cyclists to the greatest extent possible and amenitizing the area. And while also providing sufficient parking for the businesses. And as outlined in the staff report, some of these businesses have a fair amount of parking and others don't. The solution in our minds was to essentially provide a public parking lot, which happens to be a linear parking lot along 39th Street. So we'll be, we've designed backend parking. And, and the, the goal there is to just provide ample parking for anybody to use for any, any business along there. And we feel like the design does a good job of doing that. We feel like it's consistent with our comprehensive plan and other plans the city has. Just briefly to, to summarize those, we want to look at the parking code and make sure that it is kind of modernized. We have not done that yet, which is why we're kind of, which is why we're here today. A lot of places don't actually need parking minimums. This is likely one of those places, or if they do need minimums, they'd be a lot less than maybe we have now on the books. And those are some things that we'll be doing in the coming years, really taking a hard look at our parking code and, and reducing those, those minimums. So with that, I'll, I'll be here, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's just kind of the background and, and why we, the planning department are interested in this. And, and why we hired JNA to do this project, design this and, and we're excited about it. So again, happy to answer any questions and I'll be here. I'll turn it back over to Mark.
Thank you, Jeff. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So Tim and Jeff both touched on it. We've been working on this project now for about two years. Our involvement started a little bit before the city put out a contract. We, we helped the landscape architect in the district kind of do some visioning work to help sell an initial concept. We got kicked off last, two years ago during the Pride Festival. We started with some intense public engagement, talking to the users of the district and the business owners. And that process in total took about a year to finalize the design that was ultimately reviewed by planning, public works, the business owners and the city council and traffic commission and accepted and approved at all levels. As Jeff mentioned, this district was built primarily in the 50s and 60s prior to our current zoning code. So we've broken our request down into three different variances. The first one, we're, we're leaving the district of minimum parking requirements. The second, the prohibition of maneuvering and parking in the right-of-way. And the third, the prohibition of signage in the right-of-way. And I'm going to walk through each, each one of those and kind of just keeping in mind a large portion of the hardship of this is that the city is coming through and doing a streetscape project in an area that was designed before current codes. So I'm going to start out with maneuvering and parking in the right-of-way. The properties that are affected by this because of the, the streetscape project are the addresses listed, which were submitted as part of the, the packet along with this map. So what's, what's occurring here is over the last 50 years, parking has encroached into the right-of-way, likely unintentional, because the property owners likely didn't know where the right-of-way line started, given that parking in the street had just kind of blended into one as it became closer to the building. And I'm going to show you a map of, of the situation. So the green line is the, the right-of-way line. And you can see the parking spaces and parking lots just extended over that. One of the properties that is requesting this variance only exceeds it by a few feet. So the parking is occurring and the maneuvering of backing out of that spot is in the right-of-way. But they are not in any situation backing out onto a public street. We've worked with these property owners to keep their parking in that, in the current state, partially because by tearing it out and making them move their parking back, aside from a cost to the project, what it would have done was eliminated even more parking in the district. It would have required all of these spaces be removed because all of a sudden this parking lot wouldn't have been able to meet the minimum standards. So that occurs in a few spaces throughout the district. Essentially, the request is allowing these few addresses to maintain what they currently have while we work around it with the streetscape. We're confident that it is not creating any safety issues throughout the district because the parking is, the parking and the maneuvering is actually happening primarily on their property.
So just to, before we move on to another issue or part of the application, for this one, the intention is to essentially clean this issue up and not necessarily open you up to modifying parking in the future? Or do you, are you trying to keep it open to modify what's currently there going forward?
We are seeking to allow the, the users that have this issue currently. We're allowing them to not be disrupted by the streets project and take away valuable onsite parking. So we're not looking for this variance to allow it to proliferate, peripherate, sorry, throughout the district. We're seeking just to allow what has been existence for likely 50 or 60 years to just continue to occur.
And I guess I ask because, I mean, this reminds me of the request we had for the developments going on over on Britton where they were trying to just essentially get rid of all parking requirements with the thought that that would open them up to kind of do whatever they want in the future without having the, the burden of dealing with the parking regulation. And so I didn't know if that's, it, it seemed to me that that's kind of the request in the application is a sort of overall variance to the parking requirement so that it opens you up. But if we can narrow that, I know I would feel more comfortable with it. And if that wouldn't interrupt the project at all, I would really feel comfortable with it.
So our application is broken into three parts. The first one being allowing the maneuvering and parking in the right-of-way for just the highlighted pieces. So it is trimmed down to be only those property owners that are affected by this issue. The third item is a variance to the minimum parking requirements for the district as a whole. And we will walk through that and the justification for it.
Does that maneuvering include the major roads? Like 39th, Pennsylvania, stuff like, well, we're not dealing with Pennsylvania on this one, but Barnes.
No, sir. So the, the parking, the, the street parking along 39th and along Barnes, that right, that maneuvering in the right-of-way is permitted because it's on-street parking and has been approved by the traffic commission.
I'm, I'm just talking for, you know, like trucks or something backing in and out using the road. I don't think that's going to be an issue here, but I'm just trying to think of, you know, other things that that variance could be used for. I know you intended just to be covering the existing spots, but I just want to make sure it wouldn't, there wouldn't have created a loophole in here somewhere.
That is not the intent and that's why we provided the specific addresses. And the exhibits and everything that the, the city's received. It shows, you know, it's primarily along the frontages of 39th Street. Here it's along Barnes, you can see that's the most pronounced one. It sticks out about, I think, six feet into the right-of-way, but it still leaves plenty of room for our sidewalk or landscaping. And then same here, but traffic and public works and planning have all reviewed these plans to prevent any types of conflicts like that from occurring. So, and Mr. Chairman, I will leave it up to your discretion how you'd like to, to move forward. We can run through the, all three requests and there can be discussion and votes at the end, or you can vote on each variance as we move through.
Yeah, I think we will vote on all of them at the end and I think it is going fine right now. I just didn't want to switch gears before addressing that issue. And it sounds like I might've jumped the gun a little bit on the parking because you're going to talk about that. But it, it seemed like a kind of a relevant question to bring up at the time. So hopefully it didn't throw you off too much and I'm ready to proceed to the next section if you are.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zitzau, can I interrupt once? Mr. Merchant, our legal Rita Tally had her hand up during this conversation and I'm not sure if she needed to advise us of anything.
Oh, I did not have her screen on my screen, so I didn't see that.
I don't see her on there now, but she.
I'm, I'm here. And I don't know why, there, there I am. Mark may get to this later, but there is a certain part about the parking that I wanted to be sure he included. And that involved the revocable permit from the city engineer. Did you plan to mention that, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what was just mentioned was the revocable permit. It applies to this section and the next regarding signage. The, the parking and the signage that's being requested to maintain is also subject to review and approval of a revocable permit. And what the revocable permit allows is at any point, if the city needs to retake that right-of-way for a project or for any reason, they have that ability. So while the variance allows the parking and the signage to occur within the right-of-way, it does not prevent the city from coming back at a later date and reclaiming it if necessary. So there, there is a protection in there for that.
Okay, thank you.
So the next request for a variance was for signage in the right-of-way. And that's applicable to only four addresses and four businesses within the district, which are highlighted in purple. So through our analysis and our review, what it was determined was that these four businesses actually had signage that was either partially or entirely within the right-of-way. When we began looking at the streetscape, it became clear that the positioning of the sign, the signs did not affect our design or impacted in such a way that would cause their removal and for the city to incur the cost of tearing down a sign and, and putting a new one back for these business owners. And I will show you a quick example of that. Is this business owner right here? There's, you could see where their property line is. Their sign is actually right outside of it, but behind a retaining wall. That I think by everyone's initial look at that was assumed to be their property line. And after reviewing it, it became clear that it was not. So rather than tear out the retaining wall to move their sign back, it was determined through city staff and also with the business owner that they would allow the sign to remain subject to approval by the board of adjustment and subject to that revocable permit. There are a couple of signs here and one on the, the corner over here. So they are all out of the way of sidewalks, out of the way of any site triangles or anything that would cause any impairment to the safety of the district.
And Mark, are those surveyed property lines or just GIS lines you threw?
So these ones are just GIS lines, but they actually fall very close to the actual property lines.
Yeah, it looks like everything could shift down and left and you'd be good.
Yeah, we, you know, when, when we overlaid it, I think there were a lot of business owners surprised at how far the right-of-way went into what they were considering their property and what they've maintained for the better part of 60 years. So the signage request is probably one of the more simple parts of this application. It only affects four businesses along the street and we're seeking that those four signs be allowed to exist, again, subject of the approval of a revocable permit by public works. So if there's no questions on the signage piece, I'll go to the last section. So the last section is our, our biggest ask and we understood that going into the project. We were asking that the minimum parking regulations be eliminated for the district, which is the area in blue. A legal description was provided. So we're going to run through kind of our, our justification here. But ultimately, our project removed a lot of spaces that these businesses felt were theirs. They were 60 to 80% on their property. But in order to make a cohesive streetscape, we had to remove those and replace them with on-street parking. In the end, our project did increase the total number of parking spaces within the district. And the owners were comfortable and the community was comfortable how it was proposed. This is a request that I think the district had been considering for several years. Through the streetscape, it was determined that, you know, with the city's backing and the district's backing, now is the appropriate time to make the request. I think in a standard situation, this would have been tended to through a zoning code update. But as Mr. Butler mentioned, you know, we're in year one, maybe year one and a half of the zoning code update, which is expected to take upwards of five years. So the, the thought process was a consultant is currently working on the code update, sending through small zoning changes and ordinance changes would make the process more difficult on the consultant to keep up with. would make the process more difficult on the consultant to keep up with how our code is currently set up. So while this request is somewhat unique to maybe the Board of Adjustment, districts without parking regulations is not unique to Oklahoma City and not unique to places outside of the core of Oklahoma City, that the core being what most would consider downtown. On the screen is a list of districts. I think everyone's familiar with Bricktown, Deep Deuce, Coors Ashore area, Midtown. But there are districts outside of what most consider downtown that do not have parking requirements. This includes the Plaza District, Capitol Hill, the Asian District for a portion of Classen Boulevard, and Passaic. And by all accounts, these districts continue to thrive. And as, as an urban planner, I would say a, a good portion of the reason that they're able to thrive is because these property owners and developers are not straddled with increased parking regulations that are not necessary in such a walkable area that has easy access to public transportation and bike facilities that continue to grow each year. So there are transitions on this slide that I was not expecting, so I apologize. So just some facts about parking. The average cost of a parking spot ranges anywhere from seven thousand to twenty thousand dollars based on the type of construction, whether it's surface parking lot or garages. So when you're talking about creating affordable housing, affordable districts, small-scale retail, the cost of parking can be prohibitive to a project occurring. And then I, I think sometimes it's helpful to think about how much space parking in our communities actually takes up. And this is referenced throughout the policies that Mr. Butler mentioned in Adapt OKC. Adding, you know, hundreds of square feet and thousands of square feet of hard surface can contribute to drainage problems, urban heat indexes. And so I, I think on top of just the cost, there are other impacts that large surface parking lots can cause these urban districts, aside from impacting walkability. So you can see the difference. What we're showing is the amount of space that parking takes up just compared to the average size of an apartment. Surface parking covers more than five percent of all urban land areas in the U.S. But when you think about that, you know, it's a wildly large number. What we are hoping that this district becomes is a district full of of people walking around enjoying new developments. That's also accommodating cars, but cars not become the main driver in the area's success. Eleven percent of urbanized Oklahoma City is currently dedicated to parking lots. So just some greater context of, of the current trend that is happening across the U.S. is parking requirements and parking minimums are being eliminated from zoning codes. A personal hope, but as a member of the Stakeholder Advisory Committee on the code update, I hope that Oklahoma City also embarks down this path. It's looking like that may be the case based on policies included in recent plans that have been adopted. But peer cities like St. Paul, Alexandria, Minneapolis, Hartford, Buffalo, they've all begun to, to peel back these minimum parking requirements because the cities like Oklahoma City are starting to increase the availability of public transportation, the availability of bike lanes and say bike infrastructure, and then allowing more urban infill that's causing more folks to be able to live in the areas that they work without requiring they own a car. I just have two more slides, and I appreciate everyone, everyone's time here. These are the three recent plans that have been adopted. Plan OKC being the overarching comprehensive plan for the city. They highly encourage shared parking agreements, which is exactly what this district has organically done over the last decade. And they guided the other plans to develop appropriate parking standards with the understanding that our current code requirements are much greater than maybe they needed to be. Adapt OKC followed, which Mr. Butler could speak to this, but I, I think was adopted as part of Plan OKC. That specifically said in Section MB dash sixteen that they seek to update the municipal code to eliminate minimum parking requirements for new developments. And then Preserve OKC. Thirty Ninth Street, while it's not technically a historic district, it has a lot of the characteristics of a built environment that could be or may be one day. Buildings are brought up close to the property line. In some cases, parking is in the rear. Having a solid street wall helps create a better urban environment. And so throughout that, it talks about having parking minimums can impair the urban environment and impair the, the historic context of these districts. So I, I think to sum it up, really this request is in an existing commercial district that was built out long before parking minimums existed. The city is in the process of undertaking a code update that we, by all accounts, believe that we will reduce parking minimums throughout the city, but in places like this, eliminate them entirely. And, you know, we focus heavily on that, but the other request being maneuvering in the right of way of those selected locations and allowing signage in those four locations. So with that, I think between myself, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Butler and the City Attorney's Office, we are happy to answer any questions you may have about this application.
I think the overarching question I have, if you could go back to the slide that has all the different districts that don't have parking requirements. Yeah, so the, the overarching kind of question I have, and I might be the only one on the board that has this, but I guess when I initially was reading the application, first thought I had is why is this even in front of the Board of Adjustment? I'm sure you have a good reason for that. And, you know, maybe it's faster, maybe you can get it done without going with the Planning Commissioner or City Council or something, but, you know, that was one question, so if you could address that. But the other question would be, you know, a, a question about our power. And how many of these districts, for example, came through the Board of Adjustment to get a variance to the parking requirements? I would, I don't remember any of them. Maybe it was before my time, but it would kind of surprise me if they did. So that's kind of my hesitation with the application. The other items I think are kind of commonplace items that come before us with the right of way and the signage. But the parking one causes me some pause.
So I think Zoom makes it a little bit more awkward for this. So Tim or Jeff, if you want to jump in, feel free. I think in our due diligence and our conversations with city staff, we felt that the Board of Adjustment, and I believe the City Attorney's Office and Public Works agreed, which allowed the application to move forward, that the Board of Adjustment does have the ability to waive the parking minimums for an entire district. I think ultimately what led us here was not, there, there being, I don't know if reluctance is the right word, but not wanting to amend the zoning code while it's currently being reviewed and amended as part of a larger code update. You know, it was possible, or it is possible that within three years or five years that the code be updated to alleviate this issue. But the city's streetscape project, what, what it's done is created a situation where individual buildings no longer have the required parking per the code. So if they go in for a remodel permit or a new structure, they're not going to be able to meet the parking requirements because we, through this project, essentially eliminated what would have been counted as their private parking lot. And so I think timing played a, a large role, as well as the code update being ongoing. But I don't know if Tim or Jeff want to jump in there.
I think Jeff could probably answer that better.
I, I think you covered the base as well, Mark. I mean, that, that, that is what it boils down to. I mean, some of it's just for the sake of expedience, but, you know, like we alluded to, to earlier, it seemed appropriate for the Board of Adjustment to be able to make this change just given the fact that it, it does seem a hardship based on the way the area has built out decades and decades ago and the need for a certain type of infrastructure there and just the ability to clean it up. And, and, and yes, it is faster than potentially doing a, a code update. So that, that's certainly an aspect of it, but, but we, it certainly is within the purview and the power that the Board of Adjustment has. And so we felt like it was, it was the appropriate thing to do. You know, if we were to do this with the code update, it would, it would indeed take a significant amount of time. And the issue there, the Planning Department and Development Services Department only have so much capacity as does our consultant. And while we are doing the code update, we have very limited capacity to do kind of code maintenance, I guess, is what I would call this. So that's, that's part of it, too.
And Jeff, how come it, I mean, it just seems like it'd be like a, you know, good-sized bud or maybe even overlay district? Is that, does that not cover the parking and stuff, the overlay part? Or is it just too small of an area?
Uh, we could, we could have done an overlay, yes. But again, it comes down to, to timing and felt like this, the Board of Adjustment, uh, it felt it was appropriate to come to the Board of Adjustment. We're trying to get, we're trying to get away from overlay districts, honestly. They bring a level, another level of complication to things that we're trying to get away from with the new code. So we're trying to avoid doing more of those.
Another thing to mention is that the, the district has really the zoning it needs. It doesn't, it doesn't need to change the zoning. It doesn't have any use issues. It's just that the parking and the signage is, are the only issues. So there's really no reason to, to change the zoning when you aren't, you aren't in need of any uses that you can't have now.
I'd like to add that the, this is a, the, the streetscape project is kind of a but-for condition. But for the city's project coming online, all these issues would not have come to, to the surface. We would not know that they had encroached into the right of way. We would not know that they had a sign overlay or a sign hanging over. And there was not an issue with parking, although Planning Staff has been working with this district for a number of years. And that is an issue that they have raised. District-wide is an overall method to share parking, you know, amongst the businesses. And, and that goes back to my initial comment about the fact that it's become an entertainment district. And a lot of the parking is nightclub-driven and not, it does not interfere with the businesses that are there during the day.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of similar to downtown. It's, you know, downtown, we don't have parking minimums. You know, instead, it's, it's a little bit different system, you know, and parking garages that, that, that serve many different properties. And it's kind of the same thinking here, you know, we've got this, uh, this on-street parking facility that we're designing and building that, that will serve all of this. And so it just, it fills the need.
Redo these roads? Are they going to reestablish a new right of way? Or as a surveyor, I'd be more concerned with those property lines and how far they actually are off. I mean, I'll never trust just straight GIS data from the internet.
Well, no, and we didn't. So as part of the engineering drawings that we did, we surveyed everybody's property and pinned everybody's corner. And we established the right of way that way. You know, and this area is an old platted area. I will add that this is a piece of historic in that it's a small piece of US sixty-six, the original US sixty-six. So in its original location, not relocated. So that's important to the, to the businesses and neighbors in the area as well as being able to build the project without costing the private citizens additional monies to fix their issues, but bringing the project in with the city's budget and then deal with these little, you know, offshoots of issues that have turned up as a result of our survey.
God, much better after that, Tim, thanks. The way Mark says, like, we slapped everything on top and called it good.
You, you know those planners.
My, my apologies if, if that's how that was taken on the, the aerial. It's a little, it was a little easier to zoom in on than on the exhibits. And Commissioner Privet, I think to JJ's point earlier, you know, our, the consulting team and the city staff, we did consider a PUD for the area. But like JJ mentioned, that opens the district up and all these property owners to conversations about uses and landscaping and ties them into a new zoning in perpetuity that is less flexible than a proposed new code would be. So that's, that was one of the driving factors of why we went through Board of Adjustment rather than an attempted PUD.
Ms. Douglas Tally?
Then also, the language we discussed a few minutes ago should alleviate that concern. Our office recommends that any motion includes specifically a, a language that says, "To the extent authorized by a revocable permit issued by the city engineer, if any, as authorized in Oklahoma City Municipal Code, Section two dash one thirteen." So that would take care of the part, the concern that you just expressed about the right of way and to kind of close it up as far as the legal concerns regarding that part.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, again, I, I, on, on the substance of it, it makes perfect sense. And I don't think that there's anything particularly objectionable about what's being proposed at all. Frankly, I think it's, it would be a good thing. My only concern is, you know, the, the areas that we're talking about here that are, that are comparable, that don't have parking minimums, those are some of the most frustrating places to park in the city. And I agree with you that we're going to get more Ubers. And at the risk of sounding like Isaac Asimov, I think we're going to have self-driving cars in the not-too-distant future, just dropping people off to different places. So I do think the use case for parking lots is kind of short-lived. But, you know, on, on kind of fundamental grounds, for me, I think the citizens potentially need to go through their elected officials for decisions that are like this. And not to say that I'm against it, but that's my hesitation is this, this gets kind of deferred to an unelected board here without any accountability to the citizens. And for, there's an argument that decisions like this should go to an elected board so that if the city doesn't like it, they vote those folks out. But, you know, that's my major concern is just kind of a separation of powers type issue where we have limited powers and if it kind of starts to enlarge that amount of power, maybe that goes to a different body that has more accountability.
Thank you. And I, I understand your point. I would, I, I would offer that the hardship remains that current city policies, which have been accepted and adopted by the city council, are not reflected in the current zoning code. So, you know, through the adoption of Plan OKC, Adapt OKC, Preserve OKC, and, and every other plan, the, the parking has continued to be repeatedly discussed as eliminating minimum parking standards. And, and to this point, you know, I follow those plans closely. I have not seen citizen pushback or pushback from the city council. So, you know, in a way, I think our team believes that by issuing this, this variance, we're just furthering the city policy, not creating policy through the decision.
If I might, I, I'll just add your concern about, you know, this going to council. You know, the, the council has seen us, they've approved the plans, they, they're, they're aware of what's going on. You know, of course, this, this particular item hasn't, of course, been presented to them, but they are aware of the situation and what exactly is going on in terms of parking in the, in the entire streetscape design. And, and in terms of the point that you made about Mr. Merchant, about, you know, these, these places on the screen here having, you know, difficult You know, these these places on the screen here having, you know, difficult. I guess when you go there, you know, parking is is at a premium and it can be. Difficult to find a parking spot. What I'm about to say will sound familiar to Mr. Privet because there's one of our planning commissioners, Mr. Highsmith, you know, often says when when this particular issue comes up that. He can't think of a, you know, when you go somewhere, that's a cool place to go. There is inevitably. A certain amount of work involved finding some parking. And that's because, you know, when you, when you go to, you know, a suburban place, which is what our code is designed for, honestly, I mean. We're a big city, but most of it is kind of urban suburban style development. And that's what the code, the parking code specifically was designed to accommodate. But that's not what this area is, and that's not what these areas are either. People expect to to go there and 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 they're supposed to be walkable, which means parking is kind of secondary. You know, you you've got to find a parking space in a garage or if you're lucky on street or in the in a back lot. But, you know, and there and there is that tension there because if you are a a property owner, a business owner there, you want customers, of course. And so you're you're trying to to maximize. Visitation through, you know, pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, streetcar traffic, you know, and of course automobile traffic. And so it's it's in their best interest to make sure that there is sufficient parking. So that, you know, there there's, there is, there's a lot of parking in these areas. It's not always, you know, at the front or right at the door. But and part of that is by design, these these districts want to be walkable. They want people to go there and feel like they want to stay a while and walk around and and visit. So. Hopefully that helps at least from a a policy perspective.
And I'll add one last thing, we have been in conversation with Councilman Cooper on probably no less than thirty occasions over this project. Time span and he's he's been present. At many of the business owners and neighborhood meetings we held during the design of the street. We had a design charrette. In a one of the spaces there, one night we had probably seventy-five people and the air conditioner wasn't working. And it was like a July hundred-degree day. And those people stayed and and worked through this design charrette to end up where we ended up. And so I, the 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 district is very committed to itself as well as Councilman Cooper.
I I do think this. Is a bit unique and that it's the city and it's a city project and not kind of a private developer coming in here and doing this. It's got those layers of review. You've got the revocable permit. Issue that can resolve some of the things that might come up. So it's a little bit different than maybe some of the other requests that we've had that are that are. Like this with forbidden parking, but just wanted to. Advance those kind of hesitations and see if you guys had comments on those. I appreciate your remarks. Board members, any questions or comments of any of the representatives?
This is Kitty, I I do have some mixed feelings about it since they're asking for the whole district for approval or disapproval. And it really does seem more like a city project, something that's bigger than what, since I've been on the board, that we've even heard of. And, you know, once they shared their photo that showed only certain addresses. I, it kind of made me think, you know, what will we be doing if we say yes to this project at this moment? Where is that going to open us, open us up to when we see more developments coming through with other districts, districts? That may be developed within our city.
Yeah, that was. You know, I agree and that one of the comments I made, my last comment there, I think, addressed that a little bit in that. If it's the city doing this, it's got a lot of layers of review. And some degree of accountability and input. Where maybe a private development might not. And so I think, I think we can make that distinction going forward without saying. And and I I acknowledge your concern, which is, you know, in in six months, when someone else wants to do this. And if we approve this application, you know, they're going to point to this application and say, look, you did it over there, there's no reason not to do it up here. So I I agree with your concern, but I think with the city doing it here, it's a very rare situation. That I don't expect to see often. I think they probably prefer to go through other means on on maybe larger projects than the Board of Adjustment. So I don't think it's going to be a very common thing that we're going to see. And if it is, I think we're going to get kind of a higher level of scrutiny going forward. But that's how I would respond to that, but I'll let the representatives respond as well.
That that's that's accurate. I mean, we. The the parking, as Mr. Zizao said, the parking part of the code update is definitely. Top of mind for us. But in order to get to that, there's, there's a lot of work to be done with with kind of the meat of the code, the zoning districts and and just how we're going to do the entire system, which we're. We're starting to work on now. But, yeah, I mean. The the eventuality would be that that we have a new parking code that takes care of all of these types of districts. So it's going to be context-based so that we don't have kind of a one-size-fits-all. It's kind of suburban-style parking code. So, yes, we will, we will definitely be addressing that for this district, districts like this. But unfortunately, it's it's still down the road a little bit. And I would echo Chairman Merchant's comments. As as we mentioned, we've been working toward this for two years. I think we formally submitted the Board of Adjustment application in maybe October or November. And even after it was submitted, we continued to work through these things with the city attorney's office. I know personally, this has been one of the most heavily vetted projects I've ever been a part of. Through planning, public works, utilities, the traffic department, also the traffic commission. City council presentations on top of the, Mr. Butler can correct me, I'm misremembering the name, the community, the neighborhood community enhancement board. That's overseeing the Better Streets Funding. And then on top of the, you know, seventy people we engaged with at a community meeting. In addition to the hundreds of people we engaged with at the Pride Festival. So. This has been seen and reviewed. More times with more hours into it than than I think any of us can count. So, but we do appreciate your your consideration and thoughtfulness of the application.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
I have a question, just because I'm not super familiar with this neighborhood as I am with the others on this list that's here. But what is the residential area around this project like?
If I can pull that aerial up real quick, the project is bound to the north by Interstate forty-four. There is a a bike connection that goes underneath the bridge at Young's Boulevard. But we have Penn on our east. And then there is residential to our south and then more commercial and apartments, multifamily as you move west down Thirty-Ninth Street. So it's not quite the same condition that you would see in a Paseo or a Plaza District where we're bound on all edges by single-family residential.
Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. There is one thing that, so there's a couple of new developments that are underway and and they're. All the new development that I've seen is multifamily. With, you know, restricted parking space areas. But this neighborhood from Thirty-Sixth Street north to the highway is in kind of a comeback mode. You're seeing a lot of old carpenter-style. Cottages that are being renovated in that area. Also along Thirty-Ninth Street. So it's kind of a, I think it's an area that's rebuilding.
And Ms. Yamara, that, I mean, that's a good point. I I think where you're going with that is. Are we going to? Encroach on some of this residential. Some of these residential properties. I I guess you're, I I say we're thinking as a part of this parking issue. Is everyone going to go to the neighborhoods to park potentially? And, I mean, there's resident, I'm very familiar with this kind of, I've lived, you know, half a mile. To the south of this area. Live to the. To the east over there of Penn, I mean, I've lived around there before. And there's a lot of residential over there. I mean, it it abuts the subject property or properties with a bunch of residential. And so if that's your concern, I mean, I think that's a valid concern. Is that kind of where you're going?
Yeah, because, you know, in these other areas, like I said, I'm very familiar with all the others. And, you know, I know that's what before, when we've had issues come before us about, for example, Plaza District and things like that. I mean, that's the a big concern is that if, you know, I know that as a whole, the city is moving towards and hoping that, you know, in the next twenty, thirty years, everybody's going to be using cars less and more public transportation. But this is still Oklahoma City, right? And and it it may be going in that direction, but in the meantime, people are still going to be driving there and finding a place to park. And even if it's in front of someone's house. So, yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly kind of where I was going with that. I just wanted to be a little more familiar with the the residential area around there because that's exactly what happens in Paseo and Plaza and some of these other areas.
I I think, though. You know, I I don't know how they would respond other than one thing, which is. That all these neighbors presumably received notice within the notice area and have not objected to.
Right.
And not only that, it sounds like they're a part of the discussions here and.
Questions.
And and supported, so, you know, that works in their favor, but just because there aren't objections, doesn't mean we necessarily can't raise some of these concerns on our own. So if the if the representatives want to address that, feel free.
Go ahead, Mark. So. Yeah, we understand that view. We, I I would say that I would think. The city, as well as any adjacent homeowners, if this became the next Plaza District, would be more than thrilled to see this area revitalized like that. You know, I think we typically only ever look at streets in one way, which is just the movement of vehicles as quickly as we can. I would offer an alternative view that residential roads like this are woefully underutilized. And in one of those ways that is used as parking, it is a piece of the public infrastructure. And so, you know, while some conflicts have arose in places like Plaza District, they are. Working themselves out. As the district continues to expand and work with residents. You know, Mr. Butler, I think, was kind of hit the nail on the head earlier. You know, I cannot think of a single great place I've gone to where. Street parking was not just part of the experience of that area. And that's, that's whether you go to Asheville, North Carolina, or bigger cities like Philadelphia, New York. You know, when we reach a point in of a city of of density, the conversations will begin to occur about. Limited time for on-street parking, parking only on one side of the street, permits for residential uses. But I I think in this district, you're probably looking ten to fifteen years out from revitalization to where parking within the neighborhood becomes a a significant issue. I I know the Pride Festival, which sees, I don't remember the number. Jeff, if if you recall, the number of visitors that the Pride Festival receives. When we loaded up and drove over there to to unpack our tent and get it there, we parked. Keep in mind, this is the busiest day this district sees. We parked right about here on the street. And so there is still a considerable amount of parking when you look at the Havana Inn, surface parking lots around it. These, all these owners continue to share and have these unwritten cross-access agreements because they know what's best for one business owner is what's best for all of them. So. I I think we hope that, you know, this district becomes the next Plaza, becomes the next Paseo. And, you know, we just, we ask for maybe a little bit of. And unorthodox or outside-the-box review here that, you know, parking on the street in urban neighborhoods is not. That bad of a thing. And I I know that's a, that can be a stretch, and we've we've talked with the community about this. And. I think ultimately people were supportive based on what the project would ultimately do for the neighborhood. Yeah, and I I would add, I mean, it's a that, it's a valid concern and something that we, as the Planning Department, have have certainly. Thought about in in some of the districts that have been mentioned. The Plaza District, for example, you know, there's. And it's a good problem to have, you know, if if you've got. You're always going to have challenges in a district and when a district revitalizes and and draws a lot of customers, then, you know, the, you're going to have challenges. But in, I don't know, in my opinion, that's a better challenge to have than than a lack of of activity. But in that district, we've had, you know, when when cases, new cases come. We look at care, parking carefully, of course, but we've had. We've had recent cases where. Business, business owners have have, they're trying to add parking because they know, and they're trying to add it as close to the to the to the main street as possible. Because, and I'm I'm frankly surprised by how. How short, how do I say this? People just aren't willing to walk very far to get to their destination. And so there's pressure in the the Plaza District to get those parking spaces as close to the to the front doors as possible. So. And you, you know, I would think that, well, people would just, you know, park a a block down the street and it'd be no big deal. But business owners. Get feedback from customers and they know that they're just not willing to to walk that far. So while it is a valid concern, you know, how much, I certainly think it is anyway, that how much, how much will this affect the neighborhoods? I I think just, just wanted to share that experience and that, the those facts with you. Because, like I said earlier, I think it is in the best interests of these businesses to make sure that they're providing parking. That if not onsite, very close by. And just wanted to reemphasize, too, that it's, you know, like Mark said earlier, we're we're actually, you know, increasing the the number of available parking spaces. So in our minds, this this isn't really about. Losing parking or having the ability to have fewer parking spaces. It's just about the flexibility between, you know, businesses, for example. One might have a little less, one might have a little more. It's just about kind of a shared parking pool. That that's, I think, the 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 big thing we're trying to accomplish. So that it just becomes administratively easier and less burdensome on the area and the property owners to have to worry about. You know, oh, I've got to have one extra parking stall, where am I going to get that? To to be able to do what I want to do, to change the seats or expand my building or whatever it might be. So, I mean, it's something that bears monitoring over the long term, the the parking situation and how it's working out.
I do have one potential. Solution that that might alleviate some of the concerns. And still. Keep the ball rolling on this. If this is in the application, I didn't see it, but does anyone happen to know the total number of required parking spaces? For the total area that we're trying to get a variance for? And I guess I'll, without putting you on the spot, I guess I'll tell you where I'm going. I mean. You folks have been here a lot, you know, that with these parking variance requests, we generally like to put a number on them. And so I know I would feel more comfortable personally, and I don't know that it'll be easy to do, but I I know I would feel more comfortable if maybe we. Reduced the to the number, and if we need to do that by address or however we need to do that, or total, whatever makes it easier for you all. If we could reduce that without totally eliminating that, I think you could still continue with the project. You're saying you're not going to reduce the total number of spaces anyway. You kind of just want to have the flexibility to move around. I think this is potentially a way to do that without us. Given kind of a wholesale. Variance for all parking requirements for this area.
I I think. I think there's some concern about, about half the district right now is automotive or light industrial person storage uses. Which require very little parking. So while, you know, we haven't run an updated requirement. It's very possible that they meet the parking today, but if one of those businesses becomes a restaurant, a retail shop or a club, that's what will. Quickly spin the district into not meeting it. I don't know that we've discussed this, but if if there is. I don't know that we've discussed this, but if, if there is a lot of hesitation about the, the last piece of our variance request, I don't know, Jeff or Tim or the city attorney would want to speak to this. But I think we may be more inclined to request a variance for maybe six years while the zoning code is updated. Which, you know, when the zoning code comes online, it could take care of this area, but we can have the variance in the, in the interim. So we haven't talked about that, so I'm kind of throwing it out to the rest of the team if the members of the board are not comfortable with the, the last request.
Yeah, I thought about that and thought that that could potentially hinder some of the potential unique uses in different parcels, or, you know, if someone's trying to get a loan, and they've got this lingering variance that might expire. I don't know all the implications of that. But I, I like the creative thinking, and I thought about that, and I thought that might be a little bit burdensome. But if you guys are, if that wouldn't burden it too much, then we can talk about it. The other option that I thought would be just getting a, a number and reducing that number into a way that's workable for you all. What, you know, whatever works, and, and I'm not saying I'm totally against the project, but I'm trying to think of just ways to alleviate all the concerns, and this is a potential way to do that.
Yeah, to me, it, I mean, I can see the merit in both, both ways of doing it. The, the number might, to me, that seems a little more, I mean, I, I get what you're saying about, you know, having a, a variance that would expire and that may be causing people issues. But I think where, I, I, to me, that, that would be a workable solution, because like Mark is saying, you know, if you put it six years out or something, you know, we're, or, you know, we're, we're confident we'll have a code in place by then. And so I think you wouldn't have to worry about any, about any expiration of a variance. It, it will just kind of take care of itself. So I kind of, I kind of like, would prefer that idea. It seems administratively easier than, than, you know, kind of tallying and keeping track of all the, of the parking stalls in the entire area, which are all owned by different, you know, folks and all of that. So, yeah, I, I think that would be a workable solution, and it would just, it would, it would work itself out, because we will indeed revisit this. I would imagine that it would become, that it would have a kind of a parking district regulation that would be similar to other areas of its, of its kind. And it would be taking, it, it will be taken care of as part of the code update. We just don't know quite yet what it'll look like. Could I, yeah, we could do the, the, the limited term, that would be, I think that would work out.
And, and that might appease other commissioners' fears that, you know, only so much development could even occur within six years. So it's unlikely that a problem that doesn't exist today would, within the next six years, suddenly become so overwhelming. So I think of the, it kind of sounds like maybe there's support on our team for that, if that helps make it a more palatable request for the commission.
Just speaking on my behalf, and, and not anyone else on the board, but that, that makes me much more comfortable with the request. I am highly cautious and will be very skeptical of any applications in the future that try to use this as a basis to get a, a temporary variance to their parking requirements, using this case as kind of precedent. So, you know, I'll be on the lookout for that, and it sounds like a lot of the other board members will as well. But this one seems unique to me. The city's involved, it's got a lot of vetting and a lot of input from interested parties. And so I think a temporary one makes sense here. And if any individual property owner has issues with a temporal limitation on the variance, they can come and get a longer one, or try to get a longer one or something. So that makes sense to me. Board members, questions or comments?
Good question. If we grant a temporary, what was the timeframe that's recommended on it?
They've requested six years, so we can, I mean, that, that seems reasonable to me, but I'm open to anything, really. But that's what's been requested.
And, and thank you very much for making that recommendation, because I was at the point where it was a little bit difficult for me, but after hearing the conversation and everything, and hearing that it's similar to a shared parking pool, I can see all of this coming into play. And with the city backing in and vetting and all this good kind of stuff, it, it seems like a, a workable idea.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't even realize this was a district. What's it, does it have a name?
It's the 39th Street District.
Okay, just close to Tin Pin or so, probably.
Yeah, you need to make it down there for Pride sometime.
Yeah, seems like a great time.
I know, every, every year or so, I, I make it out there. It is a lot of fun. And I'm excited to see this area develop. I mean, I think it, I agree with the applicants. It's somewhere that maybe didn't get some of the attention that some of the other districts did. But it's in a prime area, I mean, right off the highway there, kind of in the dead center of the city. It's, it's a great area to, to develop, so.
See, it's redeveloping, improving, because it needed it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, was there anyone else on the call that was hoping to speak on this application? Okay, hearing that, I think we're ready for a motion. And I would say I, I think we should probably have Ms. Douglas Tally. If, if it's a motion to approve the variance request, we should have Ms. Douglas Tally read in the proposed language from the municipal councillor's office. Whoever makes the motion, I, I would recommend that that gets read in as a part of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I just want, I would like to kind of defer to Mr. Butler real quick, that the six years he believes is an adequate amount of time for the code to be completed.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I sure hope so. Or then, yeah, well, I'll, I'll be sad. Let's just say that.
Me too.
Yeah, well, and if it's not, I mean, you can, I hate to have you submit another application, but you can submit another application for some additional amount of time. And if there are protests or something based on the one we've granted, or the one that I get granted today, that can be heard in the, in the next application as well, so. Board members, questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move approval of all three variance requests. Variance for parking limited to six years and Rita's revocable permit language. I didn't write it down when she read it, but whatever she said should be incorporated.
Good. Douglas Tally, would you want to probably read it so we have a clear record? Or do you think it's sufficient that he referenced it?
I'd like to go ahead and read it, if that's okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so the motion was to find in favor of the requested variance, and the additional language that our office is recommending is to include use of driveway for off-street parking, but only as and to the extent authorized by a revocable permit issued by the city engineer, if any, as authorized in Oklahoma City Municipal Code, Section 2-113.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the variance requests in case number 14807 with the parking request limited to a period of six years and conditioned on the language as read by the municipal councillor. Once you're able to, please cast your votes.
Mr. Borges?
I didn't get a voting, hey. But I vote yes.
Okay, if we can verbally mark him down as yes, or mark his vote for him.
Mark and Tim, how do I handle that first one from the city?
Sorry?
I was asking Mark and Tim if they want to handle the city's other application they had.
I'm thinking that, I'm hoping they're on the line now, but maybe, if not, they might want to stick around and get retained for another job. The variance request in case number 14807, all three variances were approved with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and then JJ, I think that takes us back to case number one.
JJ's Public Works, you know.
I think you're on mute.
Here you go.
I was unable to reach the person in Public Works that represents the application, so we may just want to push this to the next meeting.
Okay. I've never granted an application without the applicant being present. I know some other boards, that is permissible. Without knowing more about that, I don't know that I'd feel comfortable granting this. It is not a complicated application, but I don't know that I'd feel comfortable granting it without the applicant present. Board members, if you have, if you'd like us to proceed, or if you think we should continue it, we can open that for discussion.
In my ward, I represent.
It's March 4, our next meeting.
I.
Yeah, I think so.
Believe so, yes.
Yes.
I move we continue this one to March 4.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second to continue the case number 14818 to the March 4 meeting, that is, that is a courtesy for the applicant. Once you're able to cast your votes, please. And that application's continued. Next item on the agenda, additional items, seeing none, next item, communications and board reports. I have nothing on the agenda for that. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone on the line that was hoping to be heard that hasn't been heard? Okay, seeing none. Any other business from board members or staff?
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna continue doing our online meetings?
Whoever at City Staff knows the most about that, if they would like to chime in, my understanding, well, I won't give my understanding. I'll let them chime in, so.
The, the governor signed an extension that allowed virtual meetings to occur until such time as he determines that they should not, which would be when the pandemic no longer exists, or becomes a barrier to in-person meetings. So it will be something that is announced, and we will know in plenty of time.
And I thank you for that. However, I do know that there was a clause in there that you can determine whether or not you want to continue that way, because my commission has decided that they want to meet in person, so that's why I'm asking.
Is it a government commission?
It is. It's a statewide government commission.
Really?
It really is, yeah, and it's just.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting interpretation.
That was actually gonna be my crust, my question.
I thought we were just following counsel's lead with theirs, but I originally thought it was a choice when they redid it, but I don't know.
That was getting my question. It's, is it the case that we can choose? And if you don't know, we can, you can feel free to send an email.
I called the Attorney General's Office when I was told that, and they told me, yes, you can decide whether you want to or not to.
Really?
And there are some limitations that are within that language that they approved of, too.
I'll send a copy, I'll give it to Cindy to send out to all of you, so that you can read it for yourselves. And then if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much.
If you could, I mean, I, for the purposes of our board, I don't want, you know, I don't, you don't need to give an opinion on behalf of statewide boards or anything like that. But for our board, I would like to know if in your interpretation, we do have discretion to have in-person meetings? Because there have been a couple of applicants, I won't name any names, but a couple of applicants that have specifically continued their items, hoping to get an in-person meeting because of the nature of the application and the way they wanted to present it. So if we do have discretion, there might be some applications where if the board feels safe and feels comfortable meeting in person, we might want to exercise that discretion and meet in person. So just running that down and knowing whether we, we can or can't, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, well, today was a perfect day, because we might not have had a meeting today. That wouldn't have made it.
I doubt that we would have, and then the applicant that was from Fort Worth, I don't know if he drove down or is in Fort Worth, but he might not have been able to present his application at all, so. So it does work out.
Not much of a go-to meeting type, but I do like the option.
Yep.
I, I just want everybody to know, we happen to go back to regular meetings. I will not be in Oklahoma for the full month of March, because I'm leaving on the 28th, going to California. So that's another reason I wanted to know.
Oh, okay, so you'll be able to participate remotely?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I'll get that information as soon as I can.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, any other business before we adjourn?
Now I'm singing "Going to California."
Hopefully she's going Southern California somewhere warm.
I am. It's very warm.
Okay, good.
She had a baby, so she needs me to come and help her do some stuff.
Oh, nice. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, if there's any, last call, I guess, any other business? All right, we will reconvene, maybe in California, as a board, if you have enough room for all of us.
Of course.
All right, otherwise, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.